I'm going to call the May 1st, 2024 Select Board Meeting, the order. Adjustments to the agenda.
Yes.
No set off.
Okay.
We'd like an executive session, please.
And we really, we have.
For.
Per se.
Okay, can we put that at the end? And Belinda, you have one?
Yes, I have a loan documents and the resolution to sign for a loan.
And I have a resolution for the Northern Borders Grant that we approved. Just. Part of the grant. And Belinda asked if her loan information could come after comments from the community, so she don't have to stay. That's all right. I'll put it in a phone.
No.
Now you're, you don't approve that. We're going to prove the minutes of April 17, 2024.
That's shocking.
We have any comments on the minutes? Carrie, none? All votes in favor? I oppose, so Carrie. Correspondents. I met with Mark McCollum Sunday, and he's concerned about the water. It seems like his backyard by his leach field and where his gas tank is a lot wetter than it's been in past years. He wrote, I live next door, Jason's the rail trail parking lot. We have excess water in backyard from the parking lot by a propane tank. Parking lot used to pitch back to the. To the rock garden, now it goes, it should say rain garden, but now it goes to the propane tank. When the town goes to regrade, they address this, our yard used to be dry before the parking lot was put in. Thank you, Mark McCollum. I briefly spoke to Dylan. I also suggested that he get in touch with, and he knows the state, the rail trail people. I think they're going to come next week and look at it. Because it's wet there and Steve Wolf's place, all since they put the rail trail in, auto property back there is a lot wetter than it used to be.
Plus a change of ditching or something. I don't think it's ever been ditched.
Well, there's little ditches in there.
Yeah, but it needs.
Yeah, it needs some for better. And it's not our land, so we can't do anything.
Steve.
Okay, Belinda here. So, as you know, we accepted the loan from the Community National Bank. We did get the loan, it's here to be signed tonight. Pretty straight and forward. It is closed ended, in other words. We can't keep going back and taking the money, paying back money and taking it out again. And we can roll it over after 12 months. So we're all set for that, and I can access money as early as I can.
We take out what we need when we need, so we're not accruing interest.
But I just need it signed in the places it says. And the other thing is, is I just recently went to. The Town Hall Treasures Seminar and learned that. Going through the Vermont Bond Bank. Their loans are usually for seven years, so if we decide to go through the Vermont Bond Bank. We would have to get the voter's approval. To do it if we did it for seven years. Then they said anything over five would have to have voter approval, and I looked it up and that is true. So if we did go with the bond bank and went with seven years, we would have to take it to town meeting and ask them to vote off.
Or have a special meeting.
Or have a special meeting.
Because their rate is so much better. Do you have any other questions for Belinda?
None.
Carrie, none, I think while we're signing that, it's going around, we'll. Have the project managers' report. And. If you do have questions before Belinda leaves, we can address them.
Okay, so just an update on FEMA. Some things are starting to move forward, which is good news. We have taken out three of the. Assigned projects because they were fully filled by VLCT and the insurance company. In order to actually pull those off the DI list or the disaster inventory list with FEMA. The Select, we need to ask the Select Board to sign the request. And I believe that Deborah has the, has the sheet there. It's just a little blurb. Indicating that the Select Board authorizes removing these from the FEMA list. These are the claims that were paid in full. And leaving them on the DI list causes nothing but headaches. So I'd appreciate it if we could sign these off. Other than that, the FEMA process is quite complex. And the first stage is what we've been working through to this point. And we're starting to get several projects off the first stage. They go to another stage called CRC. And from CRC, they go to another stage called Review. And after review, they are sent to the state. At which point the state reviews them. And if all is good, a, some money will start to flow to Wocat. So what we have moving towards CRC right now is. The Town, Townhill Culvert, Townhill Culvert has moved almost completely to CRC. They asked one question about the, the plate, and I think that that has been resolved. Other than that. We have debris completed. And we have the recreational field completed. So that's both the ballpark and the North Wocat Rec Field. In North Wocat, all we're asking for is repair the, the backstop. And so I believe all of those have moved to CRC. The other thing that is helping to move things along is that Cherie is back. And Cherie is our seventh, I believe, our seventh contact. But she is a management contact and. She is going to be coming to Wocat next week. And the objective of her visit is to sit down with me and anybody else that needs to be involved. And see if we can't knock all of these through to, to CRC. So that's a good thing, they're, they're paying attention to us at this point. As far as VLCT is concerned, we are still waiting on a resolution for the flood plane. And that specifically is for Town Hall. There's quite a bit of money tied up in Town Hall, and this has gone on for almost a year. The objective is the state wants to, they have a $5 million limit. And they want to allocate that out to towns most in need. So we're kind of competing with Johnson and Cambridge and Hardwick, or not Hardwick, but Johnson and Cambridge certainly. So that's what I have, Linda, any questions?
Did you want to talk about any dog problems?
Yeah, yeah, a dog problem, yeah. So as you may be aware. There was two dog issues up on, on Townhill Road yesterday or the day before, I'm not sure. I was on the phone with Dean. Who reported that two dogs on Townhill Road that were running free. Got down to the sanctuary. And of course, the sanctuary is, is where a couple there is raising all kinds of different animals. The dogs got in, they killed the goat. And they did some very serious damage to two cows, ripped the hide on a couple of cows. So at this point, we are aware of the owner of the dogs, Dean has visited at that house. And indicated that, you know, they are not to run free if they're outside of their fencing, they need to be on a fence. And furthermore, the issue is going to be forwarded to the Select Board. To, to, to look at further action. The victims of this are pretty upset. Looking at our dog ordinance, it looks to me like the best course of action. Is to bring in the owner of the dogs for a hearing. And the hearing will consist of the Select Board discussing with the owner of the dogs. How they're going to be protected going forward and what we can expect going forward. According to the ordinance, the Select Board does not have the authority to order the dogs be put down. These particular dogs looked like they were not licensed to, best I can tell at this point.
They're not.
So as far as their shots and so forth. The last I heard is that the owner did come in, but it doesn't look like, I don't believe she had papers, so it's not resolved as of yet. So the second incident that happened on Townhill Road was with the sheriff, sheriff deputy.
Bluebird Lane.
Bluebird Lane, right. I'm sorry, not, not Townhill, Bluebird Lane. And the sheriff came in to serve a notice and got out of his car and got immediately bit by a dog. Where it punctured his skin and so forth. So he took off and. So we went up and visited that residence and. You know, trying to get out of the car was an impossibility because this dog was around, looked like a really vicious dog. And the, as far as we know, that dog is not licensed either at this point.
No.
So when someone, a dog. My understanding is when a dog bites someone and they can't produce a rapey shot, that dog needs to be quarantined for 10 days.
That's correct, we'd need to pick up the dog. The rea, the reason the dog hasn't been picked up yet is we weren't sure whose dog it was. And I'm not sure we still know, but I assume it's in that second trailer there. But the dog does need to be, Dean does need to pick up the dog and bring it in for, for testing and quarantine. And that'll be a cost, that, that'll be a cost to the town. I don't know how much, but it will be a cost to the town.
Is it a requirement that a dog be brought in alive?
Yes.
That's a shame. People getting hurt.
And what was the question, is it?
Does, does a dog have to be brought in alive?
No, not necessarily, no. But that opens up a whole new investigation, doesn't it?
People are getting hurt, there's no excuse for this.
Yeah, yeah, and. Yeah, I think that the owners of the dog, if my, I've, I've dealt with these folks before on another issue. They sure strike me as responsible people, so. And I'm just a little, little surprised they didn't have it registered or let it out, you know, especially in the springtime.
Which people are responsible? Because we're talking about two different people.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, the ones where the dogs attacked the.
Townhill. So they aren't the people that you mentioned to me, they're a different, they live at a different place.
Right, but they live, they live on Townhill Road.
Yeah, now they're all rolling so fast.
But Kibbitts, but they're new. So they're new. Yes.
They're not.
Relatively new.
I'm not naming a name, but they're not, I don't know, away, the people with the cameras.
Yeah, it's not who you were thinking of previously.
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble hearing, I'm sorry, but.
Can you hear it?
It's not the people you were thinking of previously.
Oh, it is not?
No.
Okay, well, yep. Then I'm not sure who it is then, yeah.
It's a house up past Manley Road.
Oh, okay. No, I wasn't aware of that, I was, I was just guessing. And the reason I was guessing is that Dean had indicated that whoever owned these dogs was also a grower. And so I instantly thought of Darby, who is a grower. If they are a grower up there, they're not licensed. If it's not Darby's place, then they're not licensed to grow.
I want that too.
So is Dean going to be trying to pick these dogs up and is he going to quarantine them? And we have to pay him to board them or what, where do they go to be quarantined?
Yeah, to board, well, to board them, they're going to have to go to Garfield Road. And the owner there.
Take them there.
Yeah, the owner's not at all excited about that. So I really don't know exactly where Dean's going to take them.
All right, just thank you and keep us updated, or if Dean needs help, oh well.
Okay, very good.
And when we're ready, we'll have a hearing.
Very good, do you want to, do you want me to move forward and coordinate this?
Well, it seems like you already have been, so.
Okay, that's fine, I'm, I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it. Okay, I'll keep you up to date.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it for me.
Okay, great, thank you.
If I have a little line? If you need me. I just want to actually be here with the dogs, since I would have to have to meet.
So the, I'll bring up the amendment to the agenda, so this is a resolution I'll pass along. It's just authorizing me to act on behalf of the town for this award. It's the Northern Borders Grant that we're applying for, so $165,000 for the wastewater. I met with Victoria from the planning commission today and we've got most of everything filled out. It's due Friday, so this is one of the last pieces. Annual financial plan, this is the annual financial plan, I, I filled it out this year. It's required 60 days after town meeting. Kind of breaks, basically what they're asking is that we spend at least $300 per mile. On Class 1, 2, and 3 town highways, we don't have all Class 1. And we just need to, to sign it, and I need to get it in ASAP because I've been putting it on. So I will pass that on to, I'll start this one. Annual financial, you know, plan has to be. Presented to them, like if we have an emergency or emergency fund or something, that has to be included. For that to happen. I received a request to sell baked goods outside the library. From a woman on Brook Road, her name is Sydney Tallman. That'd be the first mobile home going up Brook Road. She is. Starting a little baking business. And. It's called Small Town Treasures. She's going to leave a, a cart out in front of her yard. But she wondered if on Saturdays she could bring her cart down here by the library in the rail trail. To sell. I told her, I, I told her personally, I thought it was a great addition, but I would need to check with our insurance. About that, which I have. And so they're telling me that if we. Allow her to do that, we recommend obtaining a certificate from the vendor that verifies they have a minimum of $1 million. For 32 million aggregate for general, I'm moving for you. And add the town on as the insured. So before I reach out to her and let her know about this, I thought I would find out how the board felt about it. My bakery cart will hold things like cake jars, cake pops, brownies, cookies, greeting cards.
She planned, she plans to be with the cart.
No. It says, my plan is to have my cart be a self-serve cart. That means when I set it up, I won't be with it for the time it is out for a few hours on Saturdays. There's a money box screwed into the cart, sometimes my cart will have all different prices, sometimes it will be pay what you can. And sometimes everything on the cart can go for one price.
It's a great idea, as long as we, maybe we could look into having some kind of liability release, shouldn't the cart be stolen, tipped over? Cash box ripped off it? Just to make sure that nobody comes to us looking for.
I think we could, about the, you know, in excess. Not liable for.
I would think so.
I mean, we do that with. For the plan on our ball field, our teams and stuff, we have an old, an old form that we broke up. Have adjusted.
Yeah, I think that would be fine, that wouldn't quell any of my concerns.
Where was she going to locate?
Oh, by the library, you know. Sally's the one that actually suggested it to her. Sally is there in the library from nine to one on Saturdays, but. Yeah, by the library for customers coming in or people going on the rail trail. I haven't met her, I just, all this is through email.
Yeah, I could just see the liability if someone takes everything, packs it up, whatever, I, I just.
It's all baked goods, right?
And a cart, cart, she said.
We can order it, yeah, it's something.
Well, I'm just thinking of stray creatures.
Oh, stray creatures, oh yeah, we got some, because they live down here in the shore park. Who'd get her heart of that too, was it?
So she needs a certificate of insurance. We have law of the road. And she used to sign. Appithead, maybe.
Yeah, she puts it between the tree and the.
Not wholly.
And the library, I don't see it.
Right.
Well, there's no liability complications to that, I. You never know today.
Well, it's going to be broad daylight.
Well, I already, I already marked it down, insurance and as we needed. Next one, they told us.
Eat it, you're all risk.
Okay, want a motion on that or? Take a motion. If it gets complicated.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion, but as long as she fulfills those requirements.
Certificate of insurance and the full harmless affidavit.
Need your second on that? Go ahead.
Any other discussion? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, so Carrie. The next is Strack License Agreement, there's nothing really, I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Elizabeth Betty Lou Strack is someone who's participating in the bio program. Hasn't lived there for a while, but when she moved there, she. When she bought the house. We have a license agreement with her because her leach field goes. because her leach field goes across the road. Ball Field, which the town agreed to at the time, two thousand. And so when we end up finally demolishing the home, we'll have to do something to stop the agreement. I don't know what the word is. So that we'll have to deal with that. But I just wanna bring it to your attention, half a minute minutes, so we don't forget. She was paying ten dollars a year.
Wouldn't that have to be done on the property? The leach field or whatever is no more? That has to be done on the property?
Uh, deed? Yeah, property is a good idea. They include it in the deed. That's the best way to be.
Have everything in the deed.
Yeah.
That's what we just.
That's easy. We have two requests from Comcast to excavate across our town road on Elmore Pond Road, thirty-two ninety-four and thirty-one twenty-two. There's no place for us to sign, but I was told that we need to approve them. Now Dylan didn't sign one of them. But we called him on the phone tonight to make sure that we could go ahead and approve it. And he'll come in tomorrow signing it. Rather than waiting another two weeks. So it's a matter of just making a motion in the minutes that we're gonna They've done other work on the Elmore Pond Road?
Yeah, that's correct. They're a good outfit. They've done pretty good work. They keep the cable down far enough.
Are they marking the ends? Where the
Well, they're marking the entrance and the exit, yes. They're state.
Yes, it took a while to get them to do that. They know that you're
Right.
Not that it matters, but is it an open excavation or are they boring underneath?
Uh, it's open excavation. And then Dylan goes over, you know, back over with the excavator when they're done.
We could get a motion to accept the right-of-way excavation permit at thirty-one twenty-two Elmore Pond Road and thirty-two ninety-four Elmore Pond Road.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. So we received a check for two thousand dollars from the Vermont Community Foundation. We know your work is critical, especially in this time of storm and flood recovery. The level of crisis in our towns is extraordinary and the work of your organization is vital to community recovery and resilience. On July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the foundation opened the Vermont Flood Response and Recovery Fund, two thousand twenty-three, to support Vermonters in responding to and recovering from catastrophic rainfall across Vermont. The Vermont Community Foundation greatly appreciates the tremendous support of all organizations and individuals who's contributed generously to the fund. As part of our continued work on flood response and recovery grant-making, it is a pleasure to present a grant in the amount of two thousand dollars to the town of Wilkin from the Vermont Flood Response and Recovery Fund of the Vermont Community Foundation as well. The grant purpose, for projects that support community recovery from flood damage to the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail and promote use of the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail for the community's economic development. This may include flood cleanup projects, landscaping, rebuilding events, or other activities. So. Nothing popped out of my head.
I don't know what to do with it at the moment, but.
There's quite an array there. Ideas.
Had there been any information about the replacement of our generator?
Has there been any? Yeah, then it's not old enough to have to replace it.
Could we put it aside for that?
Well, flood cleanup projects, landscaping, rebuilding, events, or other activities.
The portions that would be used to rebuild the parking for the School Street Ball Field? Could that go towards gravel for? Or is that covered somewhere else?
It should be covered by FEMA, shouldn't it, Kurt?
Yeah, that's correct. So the ball field parking lot will be done by our crew and they'll be compensated by FEMA for it. And we can also lay down gravel on it and that will also be FEMA compensation.
What if we had an event to clean the rail trail from all this flood debris?
Well, we could help support it. There is an event going on. Jim Ryan is actually in charge of that on May fourth or fifth, fourth, fourth, at nine AM. He's been putting it out there. He has a whole crew and he's a member of the Lemoyle, not the Lemoyle, the River Paddlers. And their group is cleaning the rail trail. They're doing the hard work to Wilkin and then there's another team doing the Marsville. I don't know who's taking the garbage.
They're going to, oh, I've been talking with Jim. And so the bags will be brought to a roadway so that the idea is the road crew will pick them up along with the other bags that are along the roadside on Monday following Green Day.
And what if this stuff, other than bags, like tires?
No, the volunteers will be instructed to leave any large items like tires or, you know, vegetative debris, anything like that. They're to note the location along the trail. And Jim's understanding is that the state is to address that and take that away.
So do you think that this is gonna add a lot over and above our allocated green up bag among our landfill?
It's difficult to say, really. June did pick up twenty bags for his volunteers. I will be at the gazebo with whatever leftover bags we have available at that time if they need more. It it could, you know, I think that yeah, there would be, you know, other areas that could be cleaned up, you know, around the trail or, yeah, parking areas. And then that could be used to pay the transfer station for disposal.
Sounds like he's gonna have to mark the bags.
They're green up day bags.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's gonna be different than the roadside.
We won't know.
No, but if they mark the bag saying River, then we'd have a pretty good idea.
It's too detailed. Nobody's keeping track. At the other end, nobody's counting. We don't have an active letter committee unless someone would like to.
So you go foul in the foot of the screen.
Look at what's in here.
All right, sounds like we have some ideas, but maybe we should just put it in the general fund. Isn't it? Maybe we'll see, you know. We actually do count the bags at the transfer station. So we have to report that to the state. See if it's a lot over and above or, I don't know.
I mean, I know of at least five more tires from here down to Elmore Pond Road. And I'm gonna try to get those off.
Well, the state will come through with their trucks. I do remember reading that in front porch forum. They'll come through, but you need to tell them where they are.
Let me guess, they gotta bring a small excavator for some of this stuff, move it, and then trailer it in front of it and go up and down as they pick it into the trailer?
I would just probably leave the bike up on my Elmore Pond Road. For a town who picks them up, takes them to the transfer station.
I'd rather have the state pick them.
Well, leave it in that parking lot across the road then.
Yeah. Or pull them up near the end of the trail and we'll tell them we got five, five of them here in town. We'll report it. Can you write down where they are?
I know where they are.
All right.
I would just go gather them up. Because somewhere down over a bank, you gotta
Yeah. If you could gather them up, that would be fabulous. And then we can tell Jim Ryan and he can notify the state. I saw them on the trail anyway with a truck this week. And what they were doing.
When they're cutting back.
They were from the Elmore Pond Road in there. All right. Think on it. Forest Trail Designs sold the ball field. I have been a table that because she's not ready. I put it on there. She's having a hard time touching base with Dylan and the school principal. So they have a design for the trail, for that grant they got about two years ago that we have very often do, brings a trail from the school to the ball field. They were gonna cross the Elmore Pond Road, broke, Elmore Brook. That's not happening. She wants to know some good ideas for street calming, calming for the small portion there. You know, they're gonna have to go over the bridge and East Hill Road berms. I think that Michael took care of that.
Yeah, we've had some questions about the greater work on East Hill, Town Hill, West Hill, Sand Hill. And after speaking with Dylan, the reason that some of the berms existed and some of the greater work is not what we've come to expect out of the guys was because they were in such a rush to try and get as much graded as they could, that they were just rushing through the work and that things do, things will improve as they get more time to a little bit more finesse in the roads. He is, he was made aware, select workers are made aware of some poor grading and step it up.
And Michael's around some in the day with his business, so he's agreed to until we hire assistant to, I don't know, go between?
I'm trying to work with Dylan to find out how we can create a system where, you know, for every one of our meetings, he gives us an update or gives me an update that I can bring to you guys about where they've been and where they're going. So that any concerned public can listen in and find out what the plan is. Haven't heard back from him yet on what that system's gonna look like yet, but hopefully we put something in place.
Flatiron Road update. I wanted to slide you now that I was determined for the engineering drawings that flatironed the road. It's gonna be moved back like eight to ten feet towards the bank, which would be on school property. And we've learned that through the school's attorney that there has to be a special school vote to allow an easement. But I was able to get it on, get it combined with the bond vote what's happening on June fourth to get hopefully a positive vote that we can have an easement for that land. It's about three hundred and fifty feet. It would go from like the back top, black top to the the hoses there, the fire hydrant for the school ran there. The other thing Lucian is working on is finding out from the state whether we have to do an amendment to the school's Act Two Fifty permit because of that, because the school is on an Act Fifty permit. So he's working on that.
The land has no, that land has no real value. You can't develop that or anything like that, so.
Well, they have an Act Two Fifty permit existing now. They had to get, they had to amend their Act Two Fifty permit to build a recreational shed up there.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
So that's where we are with that, but we need to get that going.
Yeah.
I'm hoping by fall. So the resolution for the warning ballot, the bond vote, and the resolutions, I want just a copy of the ballot corrected from all the review we did the other weeks, the other day. We'll give you the bulletin tomorrow. It's like more an assistant job description review. I did not get very far. But I gave you copies of I gave you copies that look at because really you only need to see what we want. The first one on the top, three pager. This is what we produced when we hired Randall. And this was kind of his job description. And then And then this is the ad and the job description for the project manager. I think they're pretty similar. And then this also like chart. And Kurt had proposed an organizational charter vote for what the town, well, he calls a town administrator of um select board assistant. And it seems pretty heavy. A lot of things um for someone to do. The compensation cannot be that anymore. You're not gonna hire anyone for something. That is for sure. How do you wanna deal with this? I mean, do you wanna go through and see what um if there's things you'd like to change? Uh do you wanna leave it up to me?
Like a chance to read through it.
Uh huh.
Um and maybe we, cuz we've gotta post this soon. In order to start getting applicants for the fiscal year.
Well, I think we can post it and say, you know, the job is expected the first of the year.
Yeah, I'd like a chance to kind of look at them and see if there's anything we could either add or delete.
Linda, if I can make a a recommendation. Um one of the thing that became apparent to me in in working this job is that there are an awful lot of um opportunities out there for funding. Um and one of the things that uh this individual might you might wanna focus this individual on is um those opportunities. And not only uh to be able to um follow up with those opportunities, but also the ones that we already have that require some uh some management. Uh for instance, the the BLCT um provides some money for work. Um but you have to follow on that. You have to fill out the proper forms. And you have to know what deadlines are and get, you know, make sure those things are done. But all of those things are uh it's money. It's money to the town. Um and I just think that that's a an important uh component to be focusing on when you look at this. Uh that you are able to take advantage of the many, many opportunities that are out there. It's just a lot of chasing stuff down. Thank you.
Thinking it's gonna be a forty hour.
Budget is six thousand if we're going to include so anything over twenty twenty-four hours a week on a regular basis, then bumps in health insurance, retirement.
Which brings down the hourly. Comes out of that six. So Kurt, having done the job, is twenty-three hours enough?
No, I I can tell you already. It's too people. It's too people doing it.
Right.
No, I don't. I I agree. It's it's not enough. Um but if you, if that's the formula that we have to work with, um focusing on a few components of this would really be beneficial.
That's what I'm thinking that it would be. Um you need to decide where the, we want the focus to alleviate the select board, some of the select work. Um you know, maybe that will grow in the future. But it's too encompassing for that um.
Well, great. A great deal of the work has been it seems like, right, watching you from the outside, it seems like a great deal of the work has been focused on roads and grant aid and and all the other things that have to do with highway department things. Uh one of the commissioners, or back in a commissioner, return with that position of eliminating some of some of this, how could that work? If we backed out some of the road management from the select board assistant?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it would.
Does that just create, historically, does that create a lot of neighbors that it's worth?
We haven't really had a road. Just have we done one?
Not one.
Uh. Did we ever? We had Lucian for a while.
Eight years ago. We had Todd.
Oh.
Todd. Todd, you, you have X, Harris.
Um.
We had him for a while. That seemed to work out, but the other flip side of it is, is you have to get the road foreman in that other person work together.
Hmm.
Some of the problem. One wants to do one thing, one wants to do the other and it's gonna be compromised.
I've always viewed the uh uh you know, the ultimate town administrator would also be uh the the road foreman. Yeah, in the respect that they would handle the administrative side of things for the road. Um I think we have an excellent road crew. I think they do ver- a very, very good job. Um and but their weak side is administration. And so I thought in a perfect world, uh the administration would be handled by the town administrator.
But a road commissioner could you know, would have a job description, so necessary road commissioner doesn't have to tell them what to do every day. They
Right.
They can help them with their budget, their ordering, their grants, all these forms that I've, that I've been filling out. Um all those things too. And then also be an ear for, you know.
So you're, you're basically saying the select board assistant would take that section away from the project manager. Could take away the uh road.
Well, we're just discussing it.
I mean, that way
Possibility.
Because I see the administrator just trying to keep the facilities running. Which could be the buildings, transfer stations would work on ramps. And the select board assistant would try to be the interface between personnel. But then your, your manager would oversee him to make sure everything's working.
We're, we're not gonna, by extension, we're only gonna have two positions.
Just one. You're gonna have to decide either a select board assistant or a
And given that we've only got a sixty thousand dollar line item in the budget that was passed, we've either gotta increase the hours, lower the hourly rate because we've gotta cover all these other overhead expenses in in the the employee. Or we've gotta cut the scope of their job.
To me, it's all semantics.
Yeah.
You you've got, it's a, it's select board assistant, project manager, and when Randall came, he wanted us to call him a town administrator. It's all the same.
Right.
I don't care what we call them. But it's one person that can have a total of sixty thousand dollars. And what are we gonna have them do is the question to advertise um that we have to figure out because it's too consuming for one person at that salary to do it all.
Historically, has the road commissioner position been?
We haven't really had one.
So we don't know?
No.
Cuz that would be a difficult thing.
We had Todd and then we had Lucian for a short time when um when all the the uh road crew, former road crew quit. Actually, Lucian hired all these guys.
Hmm.
And um he got all the equipment in order and cleaned up, cleaned up the mess and stuff. Um there was a lot of pushback from townspeople that we didn't need that. And we didn't really have the money at the time, so we just kind of faded them out when the, hoping that they would take over. You don't have to decide tonight, but I really think we should have something, you know, by next meeting, a draft um. So if you could think about it, send me an email or your thoughts on it and or call me. Um so that we can somehow ideas of wh- what direction to go in. Is there, there are a lot of dated names, no ID things, you know, so.
Did take up a six foot banquet table every time you walk in this room.
I know.
Uh one more, one more question trying to get around the budget item. How does it work with employment? I don't even know if something like this exists, but if we could find a firm or some kind of municipal consultancy firm, could we contract this out and avoid uh what do I wanna say here? Avoid the the health insurance and.
So we did get someone who wanted a lot of that um.
Didn't scare us.
But I think it was kind of uh expensive. And then you lose that he means a lot.
The person is basically, what do you mean he's out of town?
Like I said, I don't even know if something like that exists.
There is, because there was someone, I don't know if I have anything in writing. They actually called and and talked to me. When we first set this out doing this, we had a a committee, a big committee. We spent a lot of time. We had Bill Cotton, Don Zilla, we had lots of people. We actually hired the former town manager administrator in Johnson to facilitate this whole thing um. Yeah, I recall there was a woman who had, I think she had submitted uh something and uh yeah, it was
It said almost a quarter million. And she was let's say what's metal stack somewhere down there. And she was to come to the meeting, she wore a travel tag.
Oh, yeah, and that was the, one of the other individuals. Yeah, uh he was from Duxbury. Yeah, we got him. Yeah, so it wasn't He wanted uh yeah. Mileage.
That absolutely will not fall inside of our budget.
Same solution, same S E A M solution um. Fifty dollars an hour subcontracting. He's a civil engineer. Need a civil engineer.
Well, that we contract with consulting or or we don't. Got a quick math if we were to spend the entire budget at fifty dollars an hour, it's still twenty-five hours a week. But that doesn't save us anything. To find somebody that wanted the contract, twenty-five dollars in it.
Like to wait until next evening. I'd like to look this over. We let the dark board throw a view.
Right. And so I made the copy so you could go over what will come in the past, not have to reinvent the best. Um okay. I can do anything about the nine-one-one sign installations.
That's the guy.
Cherry tree location. Elmore Root says the two cherry trees can be ready for pickup tomorrow, as early as tomorrow, between ten and five. Dylan said they can pick up the trees in the one ton. Uh the trees are right now between five and seven feet tall. They would need to be secured in the one ton so they don't roll around too much, but that uh seems doable. Uh also, Elmore Root said that the one tree, the North Start, gets about eight feet high. And the roots would get about eight feet wide some days. So that's what you were saying, Linda. And the Bali tree can get as high as twelve feet um with roots about ten feet wide someday. Um also, to consider the tree should be planted at a depth of about ten, twelve to sixteen inches, and they should be planted twenty feet from structures. That's all I know. Did you measure anything out there that would work? And
No, it's gonna be pretty tough out there.
Yeah, I, you know, I just, I am really getting you a hard time. I really regret getting this grant for trees. I am so sorry because it's an absolute disaster.
But I still think you could put them down by that fence. I think there's enough soil.
Love it.
In the park, the further fence.
Yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen down there in the future. We're in schoolhouse. Uh but anyway, yeah, if we could give the trees back, I would. No, don't give up. We'll find the plants.
No, I I think I can come over with a
I have a pro.
It's sort of range diameter. I'll get down a little. I know there's at least eight to ten feet of soils depth next to that further fence. Longer, you know, longer rail trail.
Maybe we can help the big pot. It's coming out of the pot. Those big pots.
Sure, you help me out.
Better we can pick them up and put them wherever we want. Then we can pick them up and put them wherever we want.
Yeah, but eventually you'd outgrow the pond, not if we all let them.
Um, I have a tape.
Have a bonsai cherry tree, come on.
Why not? I got a tape in my pickup after we're dismissed here, I'll go out and measure and see if we can find a place for, you said a ten-foot root ball, an eight-foot root ball?
Hmm.
Just go check out front and see what things look like, it's out back, any of those locations. They're pretty good, I think they use it, so.
Do you eat these cherries, or are they just pretty? Oh, they're animal, yeah, uh, no, yeah, they're not ornamental, uh, they're meant to be animals. You know, so, I mean, originally, you know, you break a thing through, you know, the garden, you have to take care of it. So, you know, that's the point, um. One is, you know, flowers, uh, you know, profusely, and so it would be pretty, but um, no, they're uh, really good cherries for eating, and, you know, one comes real early and um, the others, yeah, quite prolific, so they're if we can find somewhere for them, I think they would be good.
So you're thinking about in the back, back, um.
If, if it's possible to put the North Star down here and maybe in back of these monuments.
In back where?
These domes that are for the, the mom, mom.
Yeah, more of them over there.
But you need one back there if we could. You need about what, twenty feet around structures?
Yeah, it's not, no, it's not, no. Well, go look out there, that would be nice out in the back there.
Because that, that was all that filled. I know this, towards us is all ledge, but when you get towards that back fence, towards a rail trail, that's gonna be at least eight feet of soil.
Eight feet, right?
Because it was all swamp, so we filled it.
Okay.
You get enough, you'll get enough water, trust me.
Yes.
I can have a North Star. He are very good producers.
So I just had some last minute updates, now we're going to the executive search. Just wanted to let you know that um, I thought just because of the amount that Consolidated Communications going to charge us ten thousand dollars to move the pole of the town, they'll call. Well, hopefully that will be covered by FEMA. They have to move the pole out of the way because they, that's the beginning, Lucian said ten feet bucket loader can't be within ten feet of the wire or something. I wanted to let you know that, I wanted, so we, um, Michael and I were on the bid uh, bid committee that um, opened the bids for the North Woke and Redfield restoration. Um, that bid was awarded to Conica, so that will be starting July first. Finally. And the last thing I have is uh, Borns today delivered a bike repair apparatus. It's over the uh, I took a picture of it, um.
They come with a little wrench and a bunch of different adjustment things, I, I installed two of them on Church Street years ago.
They have a place to put your tire, to hold it, um, you can fill up your tire, um. Fill up the tire there, um. You have to like scan the code and it tells you how to use them. You're listening? Right on that gazebo by your, um, yeah, it's a slide, see it, um.
Piece of equipment, isn't it?
Hmm.
Oh, that's wonderful.
You scan it and tells you how to do it too.
Hmm.
Well, then you're gonna run flat tire.
Yeah.
Oh, the flat tire, the cab would be sneezing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's a good thing. We, do we have any idea where it's forever home, Vince, or is that?
That's it.
That's it, that's all it is.
That's it, right there, because it's a bike ride. Um, it's, find it under a little shelter there, but.
So we're gonna have to at least get it tapped through the wind, it's going to be, or is it gonna be stolen?
I don't know, Morrisville's the other towns all have them, they're not covered.
So the one, this was years ago, but the ones I put on Church Street when I worked for Red and Marcy were out year-round. Uh, occasionally they would touch up the paint where it got scuffed, the Church Street crew would just come through and pour them so they didn't rust, but.
So it comes up candle flash, we don't care.
They didn't.
Bike repair in January.
It does look like it's mounted on a block, we'll probably look at the bus drive. Or some other safe location.
I will flood zone.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
For personnel issue. In a second?
I'll say it.
Seven fifteen. You want to sit? I can't. No, we're gonna make a motion after the [inaudible 00:01:18]. No, you got the night out. Thank you, oh, why, are you gonna stay with my, my house?